Good evening and welcome to the Canyon City Regular City Council Meeting for April the fifteenth, 2024. And some of you may still be suffering because of the April fifteenth. You did send your checks in, right? That's not funny. I shouldn't. So I'm sorry. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. Is Bradley Buck here? Okay. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have citizens' requests. At this time, Brian Shepherd, would you step up to the podium and have your name and maybe a brief overview of why you're here?
Hello, council. My name is Brian Shepherd. I am the Vice President of Grant Engagement for Visionary Broadband. And just to refresh your memory, visionary is your partner in developing the high-speed fiber optic ring throughout the city that will be connecting all of your community anchor institutions and will eventually be throughout the city and providing fiber service to all the homes in Canyon City. The reason I'm here today is to provide you an update on our project. We've been working diligently with your staff, primarily Christie and Elijah, on developing a plan and getting, moving forward. And, but we wanted to really talk to you in person and provide you an opportunity to ask me any questions because we are starting construction next week, which is a fantastic thing. We will be starting construction next to the Justice Center, primarily doing some initial potholing and installation of fiber along that route. It will be isolated to the Justice Center area. We didn't want to disturb, we wanted to get our community events out, which I'll touch on in a minute here before we really start getting into the bulk of the work. But we are starting that work around the Justice Center. We have our permits in place, including the ditch company, and we'll be continuing to work with the city to get everything moving on that. And as I mentioned, that will be isolated to that part in general. The impacts, therefore, the impacts on your citizenry should be minimal for the foreseeable future until we really get into the downtown area and the key corridors. And what we're doing and working with your staff on is creating two events next week. We're doing a town hall meeting next week where citizens can come in. We'll have our construction team and our construction managers here to ask questions or answer any questions you may have about, you know, hey, what happens if my road gets blocked? Or if you accidentally knock over my mailbox, who do I call? Or if I don't like what's going on, who do I call? So we'll have all that information here. We'll have our marketing folks here so that your citizens are really very aware. We're going to work on developing kind of a website where they can go and see where our progress is. This is going to be a very long project that will take probably two to three years. And so we want to make sure that your citizens are updated and engaged with, that we're engaged with the community. So we'll have that next week as well as an official groundbreaking, kind of more of a PR-type function next week as well. I believe those are going to be the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, but we're still working with your staff on that. Some other good things, we have leased office space and yard space here in town. So on the northeast side of town, we have rented a small area that we can use as a storage facility and a small office once we get going with that. And we also have, we're also working with the schools to finalize a program to provide students free internet access. Once we can, once we actually have the internet to the people, to the kids' homes, kids that qualify for free reduced lunch, that we'll provide them for free, with free service from a grant that the school got. So I'm working with the school district on that as well. I'm trying to think here, anything else that we have. I think that is the key crux of what I wanted to speak on today. Again, we're continuing to work with your staff and we'll work on continuing ongoing updates. I am happy to come down here whenever City Council would like me to, to provide any kind of updates directly and having events. So I just wanted to say we're here and really excited to be, to be going forward with this. Our initial phase of this is to connect all of the community anchor institutions, Justice Center, the treatment plants, the City Hall, all the community buildings first, and then we will be venturing out into the neighborhoods to provide fiber to the home service. So at this point, I will welcome any questions City Council may have.
The meeting's going to be here in City Council chambers? Your community meeting? Where will that be?
I'm not sure where, I know Christie and our PR person, I've been working on that. But, so I do not know the exact location. I apologize for that. They're, they're still finalizing that.
Okay. And do you have a date?
I believe it's next, the twenty-fourth. I believe it's next, next week, the twenty-fourth. I believe we're doing the town hall of the twenty-fourth and the groundbreaking on the twenty-fifth.
And when you talk about, is, is it mostly underground or is it up wire?
Yes. So most of the, most of the process will be underground. Initially, we had hoped to do a lot of it overhead, but unfortunately, Black Hills Energy is expensive and difficult to work with. And so we made the decision to go underground for a lot of it. So it will be a combination of underground fiber and overhead fiber using the Black Hills poles.
Will that be in the city easement? Or do you have your own?
Yes. So we're working, we're working with your Public Works Department to make sure that we're in the easements and getting all those that we have. As I mentioned, so for example, for the work next to the Justice Center, we, we have the easement and all the necessary permits in place at this point.
Okay. John, did you want to ask a question? John has disappeared.
No, I'm good.
Okay. I saw your name come. I guess I should be looking for the little yellow hand up on their left there. So, and the hand didn't come up. Any questions, council? Okay. Thank you. Welcome. And we look forward to your installation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Mayor, if I may say something quickly, my button doesn't seem to be working yet, so I'll probably be waving at you tonight.
There was an upcharge for that. Sorry.
Yeah, apparently.
No, go ahead. Are you plugged in? Wait, I'm not even plugged in.
Oh.
Yes, there it is.
Is it working now? We'll just wave hands.
I wasn't ignoring, I didn't, someone unplugged me. I feel like I'm at home now. They unplugged me. Go ahead.
I don't think I have anything right now, but I just wanted to let you know we'd be waving at you because the button doesn't work.
I said you were going to, okay.
Giving you a heads up.
Well, is there something I should be doing here? Because I have a beautiful blue color on this box. And, okay, Gerald, all right, you got it. Jeri Maloney. It works. Success. That's the highest level of my technical ability. We're going to have Erin talk about new method laundry. Could we, okay, if we waited until we actually had the discussion on new method laundry? So, yeah, we won't be more than two or three hours out. No, I'm, I'm just kidding. So, okay. Any, invite the City Council, any comments or anything you'd like to have? Emily?
Just a reminder that tomorrow is the regular monthly meeting for the Community Advisory Group for the Superfund Site. And it'll be three o'clock in person at the PCC Fremont Campus, Room 147B. And then I'll mention too, that in May, we will have a meeting where it's completely in person. And that one will take place on the third Tuesday of May at the Quality Inn.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else? We do have Vision Committee meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's this Wednesday? And what we'll be envisioning there?
Yes, sir. The Vision Committee meeting's Wednesday at five, and we will be reviewing the draft multimodal plan.
That's right. Okay. And they'll be representatives for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Your lights work now. All right. We have some recognition. We have telecommunications as first responders and the National Telecommunication Week, April fourteenth through the twentieth, 2024. And I have a proclamation here. You all have a proclamation. Would you help me read this? Can you? Okay. Would you like to start with the first paragraph?
I'd be happy to. Office of the Mayor proclamation, Colorado Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April fourteenth to the twentieth, 2024. Recognition of Combined Regional Communications Authority Emergency Telecommunications Officers as First Responders. Whereas the federal government's standard operating classification system classifies workers in occupational categories for statistical purposes based upon the nature of the work they perform and in some cases based upon the skills, education, or training needed to perform the work and?
Whereas America's emergency telecommunications officers are currently categorized in the COCS as an office and administrative support occupation, a category which includes secretaries and office clerks and?
Whereas classifying emergency telecommunications officers in office and administrative support classification fault fails to recognize their central role in public safety and homeland security, their specialized training and skills, and their uniquely stressful work environment and?
Whereas classifying emergency telecommunications officers as protective service occupations alongside police, firefighters, security guards, lifeguards, and others whose job it is to protect our communities would better reflect the work they perform and?
Whereas combined regional communications authority emergency telecommunications officers are highly trained professionals that each year handle over eighty thousand telephone calls from the public, including over eighteen thousand calls to nine-one-one, reporting an emergency and dispatch, police, fire, and EMS to over seventy-eight thousand dispatchable events and?
Whereas combined regional communications authority emergency telecommunications officers are the first responders answering the emergency telephone call, providing lifesaving pre-arrival instructions, telephonic CPR, triage, de-escalation, and the calm presence on the telephone and radio that is focused on both public and responder safety.
Now, therefore, I, Preston Troutman, Mayor of the City of Canyon City, do hereby proclaim April the fourteenth through the twentieth, 2024, as Colorado Public Safety Communication Week in the City of Canyon City, Colorado, in support of the State of Colorado in their recognition of emergency telecommunications officers as first responders. And as such, declare the emergency telecommunication, telecommunications officers of the Combined Regional Communications Authority are recognized as first responders serving our community. And we thank you. Is there anybody here with the combined communications first responders? Would you please come up? I would like if, we, we come on, we'll take a picture with you. Today, they're free. have some employee recognition.
Yes, sir, we do. Thank you for allowing me to do this, as I really enjoy doing every month.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, other members of the dais. This month, we get to recognize two of our employees who are celebrating milestones with the city. The first one is Dave Rodenbeck. Dave was originally hired on April fifteenth, 2019, as a facilities maintenance worker. And on June thirteenth, 2023, Dave was selected for promotion to the foreman of facilities maintenance for the City of Canyon City. And I believe the Director of Public Works has a few remarks concerning Dave's service with the city.
Good evening. Public Works Director Leo Evans, pinch hint today for Jim Johnson. He's out of town visiting his grandkids in North Carolina. So Jim put a few notes together for me. As Jim mentioned, or as Butch mentioned, Dave started here in 2019, but I think he has quite a history before then. I want to say twenty-seven years with the Department of Justice and working in the Bureau of Prisons before coming here, working just about every level within there, promoting through the ranks the entire time. How long were you retired for, Dave, before you from one to the next?
Three whole months.
Three whole months. So, could not stay away from it. And we're forever grateful to have him here. Dave touches every department, every building in the city. He works at the library, the museum, the police department, all the city hall, the parks buildings. Any building, facility need goes through Dave and his team. And there's not a time or not a person that hasn't reached out to thank me for the work that Dave does, the positive attitude he brings, and just his willingness to always find a solution and get things done for the city. And thank you, Dave. We appreciate it all.
Thank you, Dave.
And then the other employee that we get to recognize this evening is Tammy Nordike. Tammy was hired on April third, 2019, as the Finance Director for the City of Canyon City, a position she has held since then. And I believe the city administrator may have some remarks about Tammy. Not sure she wants to hear them, but.
I do. Tammy does a great job as our Finance Director. She keeps us all on straight and narrow, making sure that every dollar is accounted for. And, you know, really, from a compliance standpoint, does, does a great job. But she, she's also brings a lot of life to City Hall and keep things, keeps things lively, keeps me on my toes, always bringing different perspectives. Very happy that Tammy has stuck with us. She, she joined a month, right, you know, a few weeks before we had transitioned and city manager. So, you know, she has seen a lot of retirements in the finance department and has really developed the, the finance department over the last several years into the group that we have today. And very thankful for all the work, hard work that she does.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. I, I also like to come down and see, but I only ask one question. Do we have any money? And you always say yes. So that's great.
Chief can't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, you did, you didn't tell me that. I'm sorry.
All right. If I could get the awardees and the councilmembers to step down in front here so we can get a picture. Last one was still its post office.
Thank you.
Again, thank you again for taking care of our town in such great efforts. I'd like to ask the city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item eight A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on April first, the special meeting on March twenty-seventh, which was the Water Committee, March twenty-ninth, which was the City Council Retreat, and April first, which was the executive session. Eight B authorizes the city administrator to sign an amendment to the AE two S agreement. Eight C awards bid thirty-three, twenty-four annual sodium chloride purchase to Evoqua in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand. Eight D authorizes vehicles to be declared surplus and disposed of according to city purchasing policy. Eight E is to receive and file monthly budget summary for February. And eight F is to receive and file cash dispersments.
Are there any additions or corrections? Anyone? Then I would ask for a motion and a second.
Thanks. I, I did want to just mention, I did send a question in just asking about item eight B, asking for a little more information. And we got a little more information back by email on that. Just wanted to be sure there weren't any concerns about why the costs were higher on that. So I don't have any further questions on that. With that, I would move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second, motion's made in second. Are any discussions on that motion? Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to now invite the city administrator to do a report on the discussion, which is the new method laundry.
City Administrator Report?
City Administrator. You know, that's the second or third time I've, I just, I'm sorry. Well, no, I will not do it again.
That's all right.
I probably will, but.
There are a couple items I want to highlight in the Administrator Report. I have a few items outside of the Administrator Report that came in afterwards. First is, you know, we, we put out an RFP for a consultant to assist with developing an RFP for operation of the bridge and help us with the selection process. We did not get, receive any responses. So we're going to go out directly to professional service firms and see if we can get, get some quotes outside of the RFP process. Really want to acknowledge our city staff and all the work that they've done, Public Works Department. I know Leo's heard a lot about this, but from the pickup of the storm cleanup, I, I've been receiving lots of comments from social media posts, direct posts, citizens calling, or people I run into that have mentioned what a, what a service this was and how appreciative they are that the city stepped up to help remove a lot of those branches. We do have, we're picking up the last streets this week. We are going to have one more cleanup drop-off day at the cemetery. So that will be coming out. But, you know, really appreciate all the hard work that our staff did across all those departments, working together to, to help with that storm cleanup. We're, we're at the point now where we, we're switching gears and gearing up for Blossom Festival. We currently have a general government and urban renewal meeting scheduled for July third. That's right before Independence Day. There, there was an email from the EPA regarding the Cotter site, asking whether or not the city would like a presentation from EPA regarding the Cotter site. And I had a meeting with him on Friday. And we, we were looking at July tenth as a possible date for, for that meeting. What I'd like to propose to City Council is pushing our general government meeting by a week to July tenth to, to have that meeting with the EPA. I had several councilmembers that reached out to me individually saying that they, they'd be interested in having that discussion. But I wanted to get the feel for council to see if July tenth would be okay.
Questions? Fine with me. I think that would be appropriate.
Good with me.
I said, good with me.
Amy?
I'm hoping I'll be back at work and therefore in DC, but I would be happy to join remotely. Thanks.
Okay. Yes, I, I believe that is a confirmation.
Would that also include the URA meeting?
We will have to be a little bit closer to, to the time to see if we're even going to have a URA meeting at this point. We, it's too early to tell if we will have one or not. But we.
Thumbs up.
We would likely recommend changing that URA meeting as well, if, if we do have one. Six o'clock, yes.
Andrea? Okay. Yep, I see a thumb there. That's good. I was looking for the yellow hand, but I got a thumb. Good. Yeah. So let's do that. And the time then, five o'clock?
It's normally a six o'clock meeting.
Okay. All right. Good. Let's do that.
Couple items that are not on the agenda. We'll also be working to schedule a joint session with the Recreation District Board in July to go over the results of the feasibility study that's, that's currently going on. Still working out the details on that, but expect that to come here in the near future. Councilmember Schmisher had received a request for community agency funding. So I'd like to get council's feeling on reopening community agency funding for a short round. We have about $10,000 left over in agency funding from last year that was not allocated. But if, if council's amenable to opening the agency funding for three weeks to see if we get any additional applications, we'd be happy to do that. But I wanted to get feedback from City Council first.
Comments? Emily?
That sounds good. Do we need any different parameters doing it this way, other than a three-week period? Do we need any other guidelines to?
Yeah. I, I think we'll, we'll need to look at a couple of different things. I would suggest that agencies that have already received funding would probably not be eligible. This would be for funding of new projects or new agencies. But happy to incorporate anything else other than that.
Amy?
My only other recommendation might be to try to shorten the applications or try to shorten the process of it. And to make it really clear what we're expecting everyone to turn in so that we, we really are comparing apples to apples. But also, given the shortened time period, folks don't have to prepare as much. And also, it hopefully would minimize the burden on Tammy and Mary Pat and anyone else, Brandy, anyone else on city staff who might be pulling all of those packets together.
Any comments? Emily?
I don't have a suggestion on this, but the only other thing I think of is if we, if we're thinking we're going to focus this in a different way so that maybe not all agencies or not all projects would be eligible. I don't really have a suggestion on that other than I think we should be clear what this solicitation is about. That it's because we still have a little bit of money in the budget, it, you know, just so that we're clear in our communication what this is for.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we can do that. We'll, we'll put out how much total funding we have available. That, you know, these are shorter projects, need to be wrapped up before the end of the year, all that type of stuff.
And it would be the same criteria that we, of course, as have used before, so that we're doing the apples-to-apples sort of thing?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments from council? So I believe that's a consent to go forward with that. I don't see any yellow hands, so.
There is one up there. Councilmember, oh, goes up and down. Councilmember Stein?
Yes, that's me.
Oh, there it is.
I, I just wanted to make sure that we find out who has, you know, if we find out that the day that we'll be doing the interviews and make sure that we have enough councilmembers who are available that day so that it will be fair for everyone. Do you see what I'm saying here? I want to make sure. I want to make sure that we have enough council people to sit in and to decide, you know, and listen to everybody's pitch.
Yeah, we can put out a doodle poll to, you know, check everybody's availability.
All right, thank you.
Would we have to have, would we have to have quorum, though, for something like that?
No.
I think I completely agree with Councilwoman Stein that we would want to have enough voices to ensure that we have good representation, but I did just want to clarify, we don't have to have four voting members available, is that...
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, anything?
Couple other things here. Our Tyler, the computer system that's going in for courts and dispatch, that, we've got some go-live dates that are coming up, some key milestones. Municipal courts will be going live the week of April 29th, and the PD will be going live the week of May 7th, so we've got some big dates for turnover of software, so, you know, there may be some growing pains and some things that happen during those times, so please be patient with staff as they work through those things. We also have Arbor Day coming up. Announcement went out today. That's gonna be taking place at Grading Park on April 26th at 1:00 PM. And then the last thing that I have is, the last thing that I have is about Rhodes Avenue. We have started, it's been buttoned up, the East Main Street is open. Do want to bring Leo up to kind of talk about through, go through some of the process and where we're at. We have the three stormwater bores that still have to be done. We did run into a gas line that, we didn't run into a gas line, we discovered a gas line that was not in the place that it was supposed to be, so we've got some issues that we're working with Atmos to try and correct. So Leo, do you want to give us a brief update, please?
Sure. As you mentioned, we did get two of the boreings under the railroad done successfully, so we pushed a 36-inch casing with a 24-inch water main under the railroad, that's about 15-foot deep, and a 18-inch casing with a 12-inch sanitary sewer that's about 11 or 12-foot deep. And then the three storm bores remain. During placement of the sanitary sewer bore, we had to locate an 8-inch high-pressure gas main to make sure we weren't gonna hit it with that bore, and in locating it, found that it was about three to four feet lower than what it showed on the plans, which puts it right in way of our storm bores. So we met with Atmos about a week and a half ago to start the discussion of how we get that gas line relocated. It is an 8-inch high-pressure, it's a pretty substantial main for them, serves a large part of the city, nothing that they could take out of service during peak demand time. But yeah, we're working through it with Atmos right now, coming up with what their engineering solution looks like to get their gas main out of the way, and then hopefully we can come back and finish those three storm bores this fall.
So you're thinking that this fall, the end of '24, probably we'll finish with that project? But it's only taken us eight years, so I...
That is always the hope.
What undertaking that has been. Wow.
Spend one thing after another, for sure.
Emily.
Just wondered if you could say a little bit more about the gas line. It was deeper than what records showed that it should be, so does that mean that, or I guess the question is, what does that mean? How much of the line needs to be moved, and is it moved more shallow, or do we know yet what that's gonna be?
We don't know for sure yet. Atmos and the railroad are both nationwide companies. They have better agreements and better relationships than we probably do with Union Pacific, so they do permits all over the nation. What Union Pacific will require of them is still up to be determined, I would say. If it was us doing it, they would require it at least six feet below the tracks, and that puts it right in line with the storm, so it's gonna probably have to go deeper, would be my guess. The benefit is, they can, instead of directional drilling, they can, or I'm sorry, instead of jack and boring a casing, they can directional drill, which is less impactful, requires a little bit longer length, but it doesn't require digging 15-foot-deep holes with shoring and trenching and all that work to put a new main in.
So kind of do a diagram with your hands. The gas line is deeper than it was supposed to be.
The gas main is here, and our storm bores would go right through it, so they're going to have to make the gas main in a big U shape underneath the railroad tracks, and that'll give room for our storm lines to go over the top of them when they're installed.
Okay, and someone's gonna get a real good drawing on this when it's all done, right?
Yes, we should. We've got a lot of holes out there.
Thanks.
Amy.
I'm assuming that the city would bear the cost of the relocation of that gas line?
The relocation of the gas line is covered within our franchise agreement.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of Leo? Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Ryan. You done?
I am done. I'm happy to take any questions about the Administrator Report.
Questions of our administrator? Wow, you wowed the crowd. No questions. Okay, now, let's move on to discussion of new method laundry, and I'd ask Ryan to give us a report.
Yes, sir, thank you. At the April 1st meeting, council approved a contingent approval of an award letter for the demolition of the new method laundry building. It was contingent upon emergency funding from the state. However, the dollar amount of that emergency funding was not listed. So I had proposed something to the state, the state came back with the level of funding that they were willing to fund. So, you know, basically, what the state proposed is, they would like us to use our multipurpose grant, the $345,000 first, and then split the difference dollar-for-dollar with the city for the remaining balance. So that's $229,708 that the state would bring to the table. We would have to bring the same. That's assuming that we use the full 15% contingency. At this point, I don't know that we would use the full 15% contingency, but that is what we awarded for. So tonight, we're asking for council to ratify the notice, you know, the award notice. We have not issued a notice to proceed. There's still steps that we have to go through from the city's standpoint to get our memorandum of understanding squared away with the EPA and the State Historic Preservation Office, so that part is still working. And then I know Leo is working with the contractor on the contracting side and the bond side, bonding side. Leo, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, nothing at this time. I think we told our contractor that typically we have to issue a notice to proceed within 10 days of a notice of award, and we told them that would likely be delayed in this instance while we waited for the memo of understanding and the action of this body.
Who is the memorandum, who's the understanding with?
It's with the Environmental Protection Agency and the State Historic Preservation Office. So one of the things that we went through the due diligence process, there were questions about whether or not we could pull the stucco back and look at, you know, the front, the facade of that building and document it. There were questions, because the building abuts the historic district and the, I'm gonna forget the name of the hotel, Mr. Caramello's building, that any work that gets done, that there's some masonry work that restores some of the historic points and the brick work that would be facing the public. So those were the key points. I think there was also, in the memorandum of understanding, that at some points, the city needs to market the building for, so that there's not a gap in Main Street. So eventually, even though we're talking about it being a parking lot for about five to 10 years, or maybe a little bit longer, depending on how long natural attenuation takes, at some points, trying to get that property back into some type of productive use as a building.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Amy.
Just to clarify as well, that memorandum of, and please correct me if I'm wrong, City Administrator Stevens, but that memorandum of understanding or agreement was required because we're using EPA funds, and EPA had to get it cleared by the State Historic Preservation Office. So that request came from the use, the funds that we are using and the process that the EPA has to go through to be able to use those funds on this building.
That is correct.
It just, to me, is a little irritating that we have to continue, if we have a building that's a problem, and it can be a huge problem if we don't get it out of there, and now we have to go through all these agencies for approvals, how's that long it's gonna take? Are we gonna be sitting and having this discussion this summer, or we're taking liability here?
We're on the back end of all these discussions, so I think, actually, it's, I don't know if you forwarded, but it was with the city attorney's office for review, so we should be fairly close here.
Okay, Emily.
Emily.
Emily is ready to go. So, yeah, staff has it.
I know, it's not, I don't, it's not the city's, it's not legal, it's those other agencies, and we have to be running after, what's their timeframe? It doesn't seem like, to me, it just doesn't seem right, that we have to wait all this time for a building that is a hazard and could be very harmful, the one next door, and they're like, well, you have to bring it to us, and so, come on, this is getting tiring. So, that's my two cents.
We feel the frustration.
I know, I know you do, and I can imagine the guy next door is probably frustrated as well. So, is that, were we, go ahead.
So, the last part of the legal review was our review. It's, I believe it's already been to the state, state legal, and EPA has already reviewed, so we were making some changes on our side, so those changes will need to go back, but I think the majority of what we're agreeing to has already been reviewed by both those agencies.
And you're asked, what are you asking today?
Tonight, we just need a motion ratifying the award of the contract.
Okay.
Impact, environmental impacts.
We got it.
Impact industrial, sorry.
Okay, I would like to, let's have Emily, and then Amy, and then I'd like Aaron to come up and address us on his issues or whatever. Emily.
I'm just wondering, in all the communication and ultimately paperwork with, particularly with the historic, State Historic Conservation Commission, what do we expect or what do we know yet will be the language regarding what you referred to about that space when new method comes down, that at some point in the future, five to 10 years, that that space will need to be a building again? How do we know yet how that's going to be worded in any written agreement?
I don't have the language in front of me. There is language that the space needs, I believe it says that the space needs to be marketed for future development of, oh, something in line with the character of downtown, the historic downtown.
So it doesn't necessarily say "building," but it says "future development"? Maybe. The reason I'm asking is, we haven't heard from Aaron yet, but we do have his written information, I'm wondering if that might impact there, so we'll keep talking.
And I think, you know, from a staff standpoint, you know, we have other ideas and brainstorming for that space as well, so, you know, we have time, though.
Okay, yeah.
Amy.
Thank you. I had sent this over via email, but I think it's helpful to kind of talk through as well. Obviously, this is more money than we had originally expected to spend on new method, so if you could just walk through kind of where that funding is coming from, and then kind of what that means for the Clock Tower Plaza project, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
So in our Quality of Life Fund, we have money set aside as matching dollars for unanticipated revenue. The original ask for DOLA was about $57,000 and change, coming from those matching dollars. The balance would have to come from new method, or, sorry, not new method, but the Clock Tower Plaza project, which we have budgeted at $1.3 million in the budget. So we would have to take some of the, some of the new Clock Tower Plaza money for the new method laundry project and demolition. We are, as far as Clock Tower Plaza project goes, we're further behind. We've prioritized new method laundry, that we heard very clearly, that, you know, that needs to be taken care of first before we do anything at Clock Tower Plaza, you know, because you need some of that, you know, potential for open parking space. The Clock Tower Plaza projects, you know, next steps, assuming we move forward with Clock Tower Plaza, would be the design, so we have 50% design, we have to bring those to 100% design and construction documents. That would roughly be, I think the estimate we have is about $165,000. And then, before construction would start, we've done some Phase 1 work there. We have some concerns that there may be tanks underneath the Clock Tower Plaza land, so there would have to be some remediation done there. Rick Harmon, our Economic Development Manager, has been working with the EPA for additional funding for that. That was something that we were gonna originally fund with the multipurpose grant, so there are some dollars available that we would have to apply for, for the cleanup of that site. And then we would be going to Construction's State probably sometime next year. The state's Department of Local Affairs mentioned that there are grant dollars available for the Clock Tower Plaza project, so we may be eligible for a 50% match. The deadline for that project is August 1st, or for that grant application, so there could be some additional money to help backfill the Clock Tower Plaza project.
Did that answer you, or? I was a bit confused, but go ahead.
Yes, I think so. So I think what I hear you saying, City Administrator Stevens, is that moving this money from Clock Tower Plaza to new method laundry wouldn't actually impact the Clock Tower Plaza plans based on the projected timeline, and that we may actually be able to fund more of Clock Tower Plaza with grant dollars, which is a wonderful thing to hear. Thank you.
That is what our DOLA, regional DOLA representative encouraged us to do.
And you would apply for them soon, for the funds?
The deadline is August 1st, so we would be applying for that, for that grant period.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Are you waving, John? Or hi, John?
No, I've got my hand up.
Oh, there it is, there's the yellow hand, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, if we had to spend more money than what we authorized here quickly in response to some condition or problem, what's the mechanism that we would use to authorize more money for this project if needed on an emergency basis?
I think if it was a, if it was a true emergency, I would, as the administrator, would authorize spending the funds and then bring it back for ratification from City Council. The fact that we, if we're ratifying the, or the contract today, and we have the MOA is close to being signed, I think, you know, our hope is that we have the contractor in there, hopefully by the beginning of May, you know, first half of May to start work. We did have, contractor did come in and, you know, did support the one beam that was failing as a temporary solution, as they saw it was something that was gonna need to be done anyway. So the one beam that we have the biggest concern about does have some temporary shoring on it.
Okay, Amy.
I was just going to mention a similar thing. I spoke to the owner of the adjacent building, Mr. Caramello, and he had mentioned that he was very pleased that impact engineering had already shored up the wall, but that he was still hopeful that work would begin as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. Kathy.
I was just gonna go ahead and make the motion if I could.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yes, I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
Aaron, here. I'm allowing you to fall asleep, I'm sorry. Aaron, this is...
This might be less of a curveball than I thought. My name is Aaron Malaco. I own property on the 300 block of both Main Street and Macon Avenue. So I've been following the concerns about both the urgency and lack of funds to demolish 315 Main, New Method Laundry, and I thought of a change in the city's plans that I thought would be an improvement, and that's to reallocate funds and resources from the Clock Tower Plaza project to the development of New Method Plaza, where New Method Laundry now stands, using the same elements from the Clock Tower Plaza design project. And while this doesn't solve the shortfall in funding for demolition of 315 And while this doesn't solve the shortfall in funding for demolition of 315 Main, I believe this would be a better site for a plaza for the following reasons. 232 Main Clock Tower Plaza is already functional as it is, as a parking lot midway between Veterans and Centennial Park and Main Street. And 316 Macon Avenue, the parking lot that very few people know about, is already functional as a parking lot. As time and funds become available, the parking lots at both 232 Main and 316 Macon can be developed and improved, but they're already usable as is. 232 Main has over 10,000 square feet for a parking lot, where 315 Main has a little over 8,000 square feet. 232 Main already has access points to Third Street and Main Street. Installing a driveway apron at 315 Main will eliminate at least three parking spots on Main and interrupt traffic flow on Main, and will cut across pedestrian flow on the sidewalk on the north side of the 300 block of Main Street. 315 Main does not actually line up with the lot behind it at 316 Macon. If parking is developed, as illustrated in the corrective action plan application from early 2023, it would cause traffic to jog left against the current direction of the alley to access the lot behind it on 316 Macon. 315 Main, developed as New Method Plaza, can tie into the already existing Main Street sidewalk and will bring more pedestrian traffic than Clock Tower Plaza, as visitors will pass through New Method Plaza to go between Main Street and the parking lot on 316 Macon. Having a plaza at 315 Main instead of 232 Main places a plaza between two existing parking lots on opposite sides of Main Street, which better spreads parking across the Third and Main to Riverwalk corridor. Parking at 232 Main is already centrally located, near two very busy restaurants with easy access between Highway 50 and Main Street. A pedestrian plaza at 315 Main will present less vibration to adjacent buildings than a lot with constant vehicular traffic. Examples of plaza, plazas where historical buildings used to stand can be find at, can be found at 353 Bennett Avenue in Cripple Creek, and I've been told in La Hanta and Trinidad. There's a smaller-scale example of a pocket park in West Cliff on Main Street, and at Kenneth Adair Memorial Plaza at 354 Central Avenue, where I used to live in Hot Springs National, National Park, Arkansas. It had a stage and benches where anyone could put on a free performance. And you can see on Google Street View, it's, it's pretty cool. And finally, if it does ever come time to put a building back to fill this gap on Main Street, I think we'll have an easier time eliminating a pedestrian plaza than a parking lot.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Yeah, I think our immediate action has to be to get rid of the building. That land will be there. We could have that, I think we can have that discussion. Let's get through the building, get it down, get that safety factor out of there.
This wouldn't change any of that.
Yeah, so, and we'd have to look at that probably because something will have, productive, have to be done with that site eventually. So we're going to hone in on getting rid of that building, and then we can look at, at comments, and I think those are pretty good ones. But I think right now, we need to look at getting rid of the building. And I know that doesn't make a difference, but that's what our attention has to be at this time. Okay, thanks, Aaron. Any other comments from council? Emily?
I just wonder if we have any information, or does the city have any information about the current parking at the Clock Tower Plaza? Is it mostly downtown employees? Is it visitors? Is it a mix? Is it folks going to the restaurant? Or what do we know about that, if anything?
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have any concrete, you know, hard statistics. I would say anecdotally, it's, it's the restaurants where, you know, there may be some employees that, that park down there, you know, for the adjacent businesses, but we've never done a study or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So Kathy, would you like to go forward?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion that we ratify the award of bid number 10-24 to the second low build, build bidder, Impact Industrial Services LLC, in an amount not to exceed $804,416.95, which includes a 15% contingency.
Okay. I hear a second?
Excuse me, I'll second.
Any discussion on that motion? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hemrick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All any other comments? We're slowly getting to the end of the meeting. If not, then we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.